Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Boardroom. This, we have a call to order here.
Trustee Broderick, present.
Trustee Bezinski.
Here.
Trustee Garcia again.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Mahalik.
Here.
Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Here.
Trustee O'Connell.
Here.
Next is the pledge. How about Diane Harris with a pledge of allegiance? Over there in that corner, you know, you'll get used to it.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right. And Karen, I hear we have some public comments.
We do, Chairman. Chairman, we have Bill O'Connor. O'Connor. He's from JJC to address the board. And, um, just as a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during their monthly meeting. Per policy 01.55.01, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board on agenda items. Keeping in mind that comments should be made in good taste and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allotted up to five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. My name is Bill O'Connor, Chair of the Business Department and a member of the public. I'd like to talk to you just briefly tonight about some things that are going on in the Business Department. And I realize that I've been very remiss over this last year in keeping you informed about what's going on in the Business Department. And a lot of good stuff is going on, and I'd like you to hear about that. Maybe you don't always hear about all the good things, but there's some really good things going on, and I want to talk to you about them. I'm very proud to be Chair of the Business Department because the faculty that are in my department and the staff are extremely dedicated, creative people. They kind of think of the Business Department as a business. We want to make sure that we're running things efficiently and smoothly and meeting the needs of our customers, our students. So I wanted to talk about that, and I asked if I could have 45 minutes to go into that. And I was told, no, I can have five, so I'll try to do that. But, um, so I want to first say that, and I don't mean this as an offense to Dr. Nemo. I really don't mean it because I think very highly of him. But I have the best job at Joliet Junior College. And that's because I work for such, or I work for and with such really great, dedicated, creative people. I learn from them every single day. They make me look good in my job, and I'm very thankful to them and the role they play here at the college. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about some things that have been happening, bring you up to date. First and foremost, I want you to know our enrollment is very strong in the Business Department, and it's not an accident. It's because of the excellent teaching that the faculty do in the classroom and the concern they have for the students, and that pays off in enrollment. In addition to being excellent in the classroom, we have very dedicated faculty advisors who really take the interests of students meeting their goals, you know, very seriously and work hard at that. And we do a lot of transfer advising where student, you know, in our area, you know, most students are transferring on for a bachelor's degree. So our advisors not only have to know how do you handle things here at the college, but how do you move on to the university? And they do an excellent job at doing that, and it's so rewarding when we see our students going off. We're talking to a student right now who's going off to the University of Michigan, Texas A&amp;M, University of Iowa, University of Illinois, DePaul. Just really great to see that, and faculty work hard at that. We're very aggressive and creative in our scheduling of classes. I don't know how much thought you have on this, but eight-week classes are the wave of the future. We're doing a lot of eight-week classes. In 16-week classes, they're fine and they work, but by the 12th or 13th week, students start to drag. In eight-week classes, students tell us, I love this class because I get in, I work hard, and I focus, and they do well. Our data at the college shows that the eight-week classes have the highest completion rates, the highest grade point averages, because students are really able to focus. This may shock you, we're now doing four-week classes. Classes done in four weeks. They are the first classes to fill. Students self-select. They go into those four-week classes, they know it's going to be a grind. And the result is there's very good rates in them, very good completion rates, very good success rates in the four-week class. They're not for everyone. Eight-week classes aren't for everyone, we understand that, but they play an important role, and we're trying to be aggressive about it. Some of my colleagues say, we can't really do classes in eight weeks. And I say, but for 30 years, you've been doing them in six weeks in the summer, so why all of a sudden can't you do them in eight weeks? Right? It doesn't make sense. So we really got to, I really would look for support in being, doing these creative kind of scheduling and all, because it really helps. It helps with enrollment. A student gets sick the first eight weeks can pick up a full load the next eight weeks and not have to miss the whole semester. When a student has trouble in a class and has to drop, they can pick up another class and not end the semester short. So they really have a great role. And I'm also hoping to come back to you before too long to re-present something that you approved a while ago. I hope you remember, you approved a four-week winter session, which when we proposed it two or three years ago, we were told, no. But you guys supported it, but there were technical reasons why we couldn't do it. But at the time, only Moraine Valley and Oakton were doing the four-week winter session. Now McHenry's doing it, Wabansy's doing it, Illinois Valley's doing it, UIC, City Colleges are doing it. So I'm really hoping we can do that. I think it would be a real boost for people. Students coming home from Christmas break take classes. Some of our other students here might be taking classes as well, so. Oh, okay, boy, it went faster than I thought. You know, I was looking at it upside down. I thought it was three minutes. Just another couple of seconds. I just want to say, we've been doing a lot of things with inviting people. What's that?
Just two more seconds, go ahead.
I just want to say, we're doing a lot of things with inviting students. We're going to have Justice Mary Kay O'Brien here next week. We're going to be having a returning night for adult students coming back. We, last week, did, a couple of weeks ago, did a Money Smart thing with the Federal Reserve Bank where we talked to students about financial literacy. We put that on. Trustee Broderick was, came and talked to, talked to our students about, you know, from her perspective in banking and all, it was great. The students loved that. So we're doing very aggressive work in reaching out to students and getting them involved in activities. And I'm just really, again, I have the best job on campus. I don't think I'm gonna, you know, maybe sometime in the future, think about retiring, but not on the horizon now. So thanks a lot, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, next we have Aiden Pfeifer.
Yeah. Members of the JJC Board of Trustees, my name is Aiden Pfeifer, and I've been brought here today as a close personal supporter to comment on the tenure of Joshua Stamboreski as the Student Trustee. Josh and I first met during our time in Boy Scouts together, where we formed a close friendship through the many hours of weekly meetings and campouts we shared together since junior high. Due to our friendship, we have both witnessed the personal growth of the other through our teenage years and now into early adulthood. Now, oh, the Josh that I initially knew is not the same one that stands before us here today. If you asked me back at the start of high school whether or not Josh would be serving on the Board of Trustees in seven years, I would have told you, no way. Josh had all the qualities of good trustee, such as being smart, informed, and always doing the right thing, even if it was hard. The issue was that he was shy and scared to put himself out there. In the years since, Josh has grown into a person that is not afraid to stand up for what he believes is right and speak his mind, which is impressive, as many would have been comfortable in the shadow of the spotlight. So when Josh told me he was running for Student Trustee, I was not only proud of him that he was going to step into the spotlight, but he had my full support because I believed he would excel in such a role. He would. Josh has done just that, as he has not only fulfilled his duties, but has gone beyond, as he has raised the bar and will believe behind in his absence, big shoes to fill, as it seems the members of the board hold Josh in high regard. Even though he may still have a lot to learn, Josh has served as a model for students, serving in a public role, which I commend Josh for. For that reason, I hope it is just the beginning for Josh and not the end, as I hope I speak for everyone when I say that we hope to see more of him, as we are in desperate need of more people that exemplify Josh's character, serving in official, an official role. Thank you, Josh, for your time on the board. Thank you, Board of Trustees, and I yield my time back to the board.
Thank you.
Can I say ditto?
Next, we have Ayesha.
Couldn't read your last name. Shafia then, yes. Good evening, Board of Trustees, community members, and fellow students. My name is Ayesha Shafia then, and I am the former Student Trustee from College of DuPage. I'm here also to recognize Student Trustee Stamboreski's great service. As you all know, he has served in the chair role of the ICCV Student Advisory Committee. I had the opportunity to serve as his vice chair and has allowed, it has allowed me to see his leadership qualities and his collaborative skills through a year. And there were times we quarrelled. And even though, through those quarrels, I've found that Chair Stamboreski has done an excellent job in being meticulous on details again and again to make sure not only that the best solution was present, but pursued. He has always carried the best interests of the students, not just at the state level with ICCV SIC, but also at the national level when we serve together at ACCT Student Trustee Advisory Committee. I am here today to recognize your service, Josh, because you've done an excellent job, and I want to celebrate with the community here in that recognition. So thank you for your service. Thank you for inspiring me, the students at my community, at the state level, and also nationally. I know that this is just the beginning. We will see more of you. Thank you.
All right. No more? Okay, well. Number three, approval of the election results. So, Presidente, take it away.
Chairman O'Connell, I'll take it from here, thank you. And just ask the audience to kind of scoot in. It makes me uncomfortable to see Bob Marcinck and Bill Hogan standing up like that. If we scoot in and make, so they won't have to climb over you, trust me. Scoot in a little bit. Thank you for that. So Chairman, as you know, and as a reminder to the board, the election was certified yesterday. And I'd like to read the attestation by Lawrence Daly Ferry, the county clerk of Will County. I, the understanding, do hereby certify that on April 25, 2023, I canvass the returns of an election held on April 4, 2023, for Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District Number 525. And I proclaim that a total of 69,386 voters requested and received ballots, and I do further certify the number of votes received for each candidate for this office. And the winners are denoted with an asterisk next to his or her name. I further certify that the above is a true and complete abstract of votes and was prepared in my presence on April 25, 2023. It's my pleasure to congratulate the asterisk next to Alicia Morales and Diane M. Harris. And Chairman, as there is no motion, permission to move to number four, recognition of board members leaving the board. Chairman, will you join me at the podium there? Chairman O'Connell, have you, do you have any allergies?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that. That changes everything right now. You're altering the course of this celebration. Okay. Have you stretched a lot before this?
I have.
Okay, those two questions have nothing to do with what I'm about to present you. Chairman O'Connell, on behalf of Joliet Junior College, we'd like to present you with a new Lamborghini. I'm just kidding, not a new Lamborghini. This plaque is in recognition of your many outstanding years of service to the citizens of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees, for your service from the years 2007 to 2013, and again, from 2015 to 2023. I present this plaque to you. Does your modeling contract prohibit flash photography?
No.
Okay, then we can take a picture. We can take.
All right, all right, great.
And then you've got a speech prepared.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I have one.
Chairman, on behalf of the college community, thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you.
This is a gift of appreciation to you. Thank you, Chairman O'Connell. How about a hand for Chairman O'Connell?
Thanks a lot. Here's my prepared speech. I like to keep them short all the time, and I'm going to be no different today. Now, I respect you all. I have my deepest admiration for all the work that you do. And, and I know I'm going to miss you all. Well, at least most of you. And, uh, have a great evening. Thanks a lot.
At this point, I'd like to invite Amy Cuspa Sims to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board, my colleagues. Student leaders, I see you hide in the back. Family and friends, thank you all for joining us this evening. I have the honor in supporting the transition between the student, the student trustees from year to year and the selection process that we, we use to select our next student trustee. And it's always an honor to present our new students and outgoing students to you every year. Before I get into just my little thank you, I want to give you all a glimpse of what the Office of Student Activities looked like this year. Early in the year, we had student leaders showing up in our spacing, spaces, asking questions. They were asking questions about resources. They wanted to know what was available to students. They were asking about advising and mental health. They were asking about clubs and organizations. And what I found very quickly is that the questions were not always for them. The questions were actually for their peers. And this is the first time I saw this very early in the year, and they continued to show this. And what happened was students would show up during the year and say, hey, I have a friend. What should I do? Here's a CARES report. Here's my friends up in the TLC Center. Here's my friends down in wellness, right? Here's my friends in career services. And we continued to network and share those resources with students. The reason I want to share that with you in this moment, and it's just a glimpse, is because the two students I have a chance to honor tonight, Joshua and Ayesha, here in a moment. They were really at the forefront of a lot of those conversations. All right, so Joshua, as you exit, thank you for everything that you taught us, that you shared with us. I know I've had a lot of great conversations with Joshos. I'm sure many of you have. All right, and I'm sure you all can reflect on what you've learned from him. All right, you've been a true leader in our community. You were there in spaces that not always people were in. So thank you for continuing to show up. And when you did show up, you showed up with the knowledge that you needed. So many of us get to see Joshua in these spaces, but what you don't know is what Joshua would send at really late Teams meeting to Amy. The Amy got a question. Don't worry, I didn't answer until the morning, but I knew he was up late, and what he was doing was he was researching. He was researching to make sure that he was the most educated person on the room, the most educated person possible to stand up for students. And the one thing I admired most about Joshua in this space is that Joshua knew this position was not his. Being the Student Trustee, he knew he did not own this position. He knew that this position belonged to everybody before him, the Student Trustee after him. He made sure those resources are available to make the position better for the next person. But he knew this position belonged to all the students that he represented. So Joshua, thank you for your kindness, the conversations, everything you brought to us. I really appreciated working with you this year, and I agree, we haven't seen the last of you yet. Congratulations.
Just thinking, it's so weird to see someone taller than you, Dr. Nemo.
If I can say just a few words. So first of all, I would like to thank the students that came up here today. It means a lot to me to have those words spoken about me in this manner and in this room, so I'd like to thank you. And Amy, thank you again for your kind words and all the mentorship that you've allotted me in the last year, even two years. Back in October, there was something that I said that really has always rung dear to me. There's an old Greek proverb that a good society is one in which old men plant trees under which whose shade they will never get to view. And for me, that's been the guiding principle behind everything I do. I was only here for a year, and I, the only thing I can hope is that you'll continue to water my trees. Thank you.
You guys, you guys, one final thing to do here.
All right, now we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Karen, can we call the roll, please?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
As we bid farewell to this board and welcome the new board, I want to invite the current board to stand in front of the dais here for pictures.
That's right.
We'll get our.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Garcia.
Yeah.
All right, just a few more words for me, and then I will step aside. At this time, I would like to introduce you all to our new Student Trustee, Ms. Ayesha Ellis. Ayesha resides in Lockport and is going into her second year of academics here at Joliet Junior College. She is working to complete her associate's degree and is going to transfer to a four-year institution to major in business. During her time at JJC, she's been an active student government member, member of the Collegiate Club Council, Black Student Union, National Society of Leadership and Success, and she also works in the Office of Student Activities. Now, I don't know if this is one of her favorite opportunities, but it was one of my favorite opportunities watching her in this space. She had the chance to represent JJC at the New Business Center grand opening and meet Representative Lauren Underwood, who I know now, I think they're BFFs, like buddies, right? Um, I'm so proud, actually, I have that picture on my door office as well. So I just, I'm fangrowing, fangrowing over you. Okay. During the selection process, she was endorsed by her peers in both student government and the Collegiate Club Council. Ayesha, I'm going to leave you with this simple message that I know you are going to follow in the footsteps, oh, no. I know you're going to be on the same journey as many of the Student Trustees before you, but I truly believe that you will leave your own footprints.
Thank you, Amy, for that. At this point, we're welcoming our three new trustees. Student trustee, Ayesha Ellis. Trustee Alicia Morales, we're welcoming back. And trustee Diane Harris. At this point, we're going to stay right here for now. We're going to administer the oath of office. We want to get in a good position for pictures for this one. Y'all ready? Welcome to the board. Please repeat after me. I state your name solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office as a member of the Board of Trustees of Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District 525, according to the best of my ability. according to the best of my ability. How about a hand for our new trustees? We do need your signatures on those forms. As we celebrate the old board and previous board, excuse me, former board, and welcome the new. Karen, can we get a call to order, please?
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Bezinski?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Here.
Trustee Garcia again?
Here.
Trustee Harris?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Karen, thank you. Item number nine, board reorganization. Item 9.1, election of chair. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Chair of the Board of Trustees.
I nominate James Bezinski.
Can I read something before we go through all the nominations?
Do we have a second on that motion?
One sec, Karen.
So, we do the nominations first and then after the nominations are made and we go through, then we do a motion in a second, and then there's a chance to speak on each one of the motions in a second for nomination. That would be the appropriate time to speak on the nominations. Okay. We're still in the nomination period, so there's been a nomination of trustee Bezinski for chair. Are there any other nominations?
There was a second as well. Does it need to be second?
It doesn't need to be second. It just needs to be nomination.
Okay.
I'm going to nominate myself then.
Trustee Broderick? Any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations for Chair of the Board.
Motion. Second.
We're going to do all roll call today. Karen?
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
What are we motioning for?
Close nominations.
Close nominations.
Oh, so moved. I closed. Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nominations are closed.
Karen, thank you. Trustee Lee nominated trustee Bezinski for the office of Chair of the Board. This time, I'll call for a roll call vote.
I have something to read. Yeah, there can be discussion on the nomination.
Perfect.
Am I okay to start?
Yep.
We all have a big decision to make tonight on who will lead this board for the next term. We have to start with the premise that we are all equals and we all bring unique things and skills to the table. This is like a judge that looks at a criminal case. A judge starts with the premise that all are innocent until proven guilty. And we have to look at us and that anyone could be our next leader. I think it would be beneficial if all of us who are nominated to give a short background on what we each bring to the table. I'm suggesting that we start with a couple of important points. One would be personal background, educational background, professional background, and your experience as a board member to let the audience know who is really a strong leader for this board for JJC.
Thank you, trustee Broderick.
So, that would mean it was either Jim, if Jim wants to give any information about himself, and then myself. So, the board can have a true idea of what we're all, because we're all elected officials. We run on the premise, when we run, nobody really knows who we are. We sit on this board, we make some major decisions for this multimillion-dollar corporation of JJC. And to benefit what is good for the college, I think you need to know what we bring to the table as leaders.
I would like to at least state why I nominated Jim. I don't know that he needs to speak for himself. Technically, I nominated him. Jim has a very strong financial background. Jim also knows, has a very strong background in technology with us going into decisions around the ERP. He is calm, cool, and collected. And I think he will do an amazing job. He also has a background in business in general, so he's very well acquainted with board meetings and how to run them. If you would like to speak on your behalf.
Sure, I'd like to give you a little bit of background of myself. I'll give you my personal background. And I just think it's appropriate that we do give background on ourselves. I'm married to my husband for a very long time without disclosing my age. I have three adult children, two in banking and finance, one a nurse who's a graduate from JJC. I come in with a longstanding banking background of already for over 45 years and educational background. I've taught in the parochial schools too for many years. Presently, I serve as a mortgage loan officer, as a licensed mortgage banker for one of the largest national banks in the area. I've also served in the past as a bank director for a local community bank and also an underwriter. I've been on two national, two state, and two local boards. I've dealt with budgets from a couple of thousands to budgets in excess of 120 million. I've served on countless committees and appointed as officers to many of those boards of which my peers had approved to put me on. And this spans over a 22-year period of being elected as a school board member. I believe as a trustee, we need to be an advocate to our taxpayers, the students, and to everyone that has any involvement with JJC. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, then it would be time for a roll call vote.
I have a comment. Is it possible for Jim to say something about himself? I think this is all unnecessary. The board itself is voting for internal people on the board. We've already been elected by constituents. At this point, this is just, you know, a show for the audience. I'll be happy to tell you a little bit about me, though. I will turn 62 on Cinco de Mayo. So, I might be one of the older statesmen on the board. I am married. I've been married for 39 years. I have four children, all of which have completed four years of secondary education. One of them did not because he passed away in his junior year of college. I served for 40 years with a corporation, have a strong corporate background. In 2019, my job was sold to a company in India. I decided not to go with the company. Instead, I moved over to Edward Jones and got heavily into finance. I've passed all the licensing exams, law exams, and et cetera regarding or required for that position. For 20-some years, I coached competitive soccer, working with children. I was in Will County and Kankakee County grade schools, doing a lot of STEM classes for seventh and eighth graders. That is what got me into JJC, coming over and looking at the old Cisco lab. Somebody here on this campus told me that this is something I should do. I should run for the board. I'm up here all the time anyway. I value education extensively. In fact, I still go to school every Tuesday and Thursday night. I wish it was a four or eight-week class, but right now I'm scheduled to October 29th. I have never gone, I don't think I've gone more than 18 months without being in the college-credited class somewhere, either through a requirement of employment, self-teaching, desires to learn something new. My position here on the board is to have structured, formal meetings that make progress in each one, that follow the rules of the policy committee, give fair input to everyone on the board and anyone who comes to the podium in a public comment, and most of all, be a resource to each other, to the cabinet, and to the president that we elected. Thank you, Jim. It's nice to meet you. And, you know, you didn't know me, so that's, you know.
Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, this is for...
Yep. Trustee Lee has nominated trustee Bezinski for the office of Chair of the Board. I call for a roll call vote.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris? Motion carried. Six to one.
Thank you, Karen. Next nomination, since we do this by nominations. Trustee Broderick has nominated herself for the office of Chair of the Board. I call for a roll call vote. Okay.
It's already been chosen.
She can wave it.
Yep. Yep, so you can wave. Okay, so we're waving that nomination then. So, the one nomination stands alone. I will entertain a motion at this point to approve trustee Jim Bezinski as Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
She already called me.
You passed.
Oh, she said yes.
She said yes.
Oh, you say yes? I'm sorry. Trustee Ellis, did you say yes or pass?
Pass.
Then it's you again, trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Karen, thank you. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to nominate trustee Morales to the position of Vice Chair.
I second. Are there any other nominations?
Any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair of the Board.
I'm moved.
I'm second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. Trustee Garcia has nominated trustee Alicia Morales for the office of Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees. I call for a roll call vote.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven zero.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee Alicia Morales as Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
I'm moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Karen, thank you. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to nominate trustee Garcia again, please.
Second.
Any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Roll call vote. So moved.
Second. Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Trustee Mahalik has nominated trustee Garcia again for the office of Secretary of the Board. I'll call for a roll call vote.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven zero.
Karen, thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee Garcia again as Secretary of the Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Bezinski?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven oh.
Karen, thank you. Before we adjourn, I want to take a moment to acknowledge our new executive officers, Chair Bezinski, Vice Chair Morales, Secretary Garcia again. Welcome to your positions. I'm sure we'll do great things together at this point. I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn before going into our workshop.
I'm moved.
Second.
Before we do that, can I just, one minute, please? Thank you. I wanted to say something earlier when I was at the podium, being sworn in for the second time. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I want to thank God, number one, for the grace and his love. I want to thank my family, my mom, who's here. Mom? Muchas gracias, ma, por tu apoyo. Te quiero mucho. To my sons, my son Carlos is able to be here today. To their wives and all for always being there and for supporting me. To my beautiful husband, Pedro, for sharing me with the public and for waiting for me to have late dinners many a nights. Thank you. This is so much bigger than just me, myself. This election, this reelection, and not only that, but this position that I was selected by my peers today, it represents a lot. It represents a culture that wants to see themselves as leaders in a light where people like me don't always have an opportunity to shine in this light. Education is known to be the great equalizer, but equality cannot be achieved when injustice exists. The demographics are changing and it will require leaders to demonstrate the commitment to challenging social, cultural, and economic inequalities imposed on students and employees originating from any uneven distribution of power, resources, and privilege. It requires us, the Board of Trustees, to create teaching and learning environments that support all students equitably, without regard to race, ethnicity, gender identity, religion, or learning potential. I also want to thank my brother that was able to join us, sitting right behind me. Nick, thank you. And just, I want to thank everybody, my peers. Thank you for believing in me, and I look forward to working with the entire board. Thank you all so much, and the victory... the victory is his. Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We're going to get started with the second part of our meeting here today. Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Broderick? Trustee Budzinski?
Present.
Trustee Ellis?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian? Trustee Harris?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Item 1.3, Review of February 15, 2023 Workshop Notes. Do you need a motion to approve?
No action.
No action needed, Mr. Chairman. 2.1, College Business Diversity Equity Inclusion Department Update.
Just going to take a little getting used to Chairman Budzinski. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a couple of updates to you, Board of Trustees, this evening. First one up is a diversity equity inclusion department update and plan update. But before I invite Dr. Irvin to begin, I want to extend just a huge round of congratulations to our new Chair, Chair Budzinski, our new Vice Chair, Chair Morales, our continuing Secretary, Trustee Garcia-Guian. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, so that's the Executive Board, and as we welcome in new boards, and we do have another influential member at a statewide level. As a reminder to the Board, Trustee Maureen Broderick is and will be, in June, the President of the ICCTA. So not only are we doing good things locally, but we're also doing great things statewide. So it's a great time to be a JJC Wolf. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Irvin.
Thank you, Dr. Namal. You want to say something, Trustee?
For workshop?
You don't need it for workshop, for if we had a regular or special, correct? But you don't need it for work session because we're not going to take any action.
Yep.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Dr. Namal, can we give them a round of applause?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Welcome to the new board. Congratulations. Good evening, Chairman Budzinski. Congratulations, Trustees of the Board, and members of the JJC community. My name is Esquertina Irvin, and I am the Executive Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. Thank you for having me this evening to give an update on DEI. So best practices is that an institution should have a DEI plan, and we have a DEI plan at JJC, and that's one of the things that impressed me when I was applying for this role. But more importantly, the DEI plan is just a document. So best practices encourage that that DEI plan be part of the institutional strategic plan. And I'm happy to say here at JJC it is, and it continues to be part of the strategic plan as we're planning our new plan. So I'm proud to hear that because at that level, it's an institutional initiative, and it gets the support and visibility that it needs. So there are four areas that we focus on, and they're on the slide, hiring and employment, campus climate, and current employees, external outreach and business partnership, and student engagement. And this was a three-year plan, and we're in the process of closing out our implementation and updating our new plan with the, to align with our institutional strategic plan. So what we did for all of the promises in our DEI plan, we managed it like a project. So we had a project manager go over all the initiatives and kind of provide oversight to the community, to the committees to make sure they did what we promised they would do. And I would just like to highlight a few of the things that we did. One was that, one of our goals is that our staff and our faculty mirror our employees and our students. But we're not there yet, but we're working on it. So HR has done some things to attract more diverse applicants. For example, they've redone the job description to put more inclusive language in there. For example, we've taken reference to he and she out and use more like you and they. We've got a cultural competency that's a minimal requirement in the job description. We've made sure that our job descriptions aren't geared towards a male or a female. For example, we might have a groundsman. We call them a groundskeeper so that we don't deter diverse applicants from wanting to apply. Also, HR has expanded its reach. We have more vendors that can give us more diverse applicants than we've had in the past. We're reaching out to HBCUs and HSIs to encourage more diverse applicants to come. We did increase the number of diverse applications we got for this year. So it's in the works. We're not there, but we're working on it. We also, we also had over 1,100 employees that were trained with cultural competency training, and we'll go over the results of that. We had a book club where over, this past book club, over 100 employees participated. Diversity Book Club having those tough conversations about race, privilege, and racism. And we also worked with our professional development with our faculty on our faculty side, and we'll talk about that. And we're real proud that we implemented four affinity groups on campus this year for our employees, for our Black employees, community service, Latinx, and our LGBTQ community. And the next slide has more. I won't read through all of those, but we'll highlight some as we go through. And you guys also have an appendix that shows all of the programs and initiatives for the year. We have over 25. So you can look through those and let me know if you have any questions. So as we roll out all of these initiatives, our DEI plan, we want to assess ourselves to see how well it's impacting the community. So we use our PACE survey, we use our SASE survey for students, and we do ad hoc assessments throughout the year. So I just pulled out one of our diversity questions out of the PACE survey, and you'll see it is, "My institution practices open and ethical communication to promote employee inclusion." So you see in 2020, it was 42%, and in 2022, it went to 56%, representing a 14% increase in just two years. That's pretty significant. Another one to look at is that we want to make sure that our institution is creating through its processes and procedures an environment that's ethical, that's racial, that's culturally aware. And this one, we did not start tracking it in 2020, but in 2021, our baseline was 67%. Just one year later, it went up to 75%. Large two years are only at 68%, and our goal was 70%. So again, great progress with that question. And these are our employees responding. Our cultural competency workshop, these are two assessment questions that we did. So the first one is, before they start the training, we asked them, "How do you feel JJC is progressing in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the past three years?" And 48% said strong progress, but after the three-hour workshop, that jumped to 72%, showing how effective the workshop was in communicating to the campus what JJC is doing in the area of DEI. And the second question is, "How comparable do you feel addressing diversity and equity issues? Like, if you see something or you hear something," our employees ask, "Give us some tools to help us speak up or help us do something about it." So before the training, 22% said they were highly comparable. That jumped to 30% after the training, and the percentage for, you know, somewhat comparable also jumped from 58 to 64%. So right now, we have our employees doing this training. We did the train, the trainer approach with Kaleidoscope. So we had Kaleidoscope come in, and they're gone, and they've been gone for over a year. And our employees are doing the training, and the assessment data is just as high as it was when Kaleidoscope was doing the training. These are the five books that we've read as a campus. I think I've shared all of these with the Cabinet, and when we get our new books for next year, I'll bring them to you guys. But we're very pleased. We did not anticipate this year for the numbers to go up again because we kind of switched the topic. The first topic was on race, privilege, racism, and we switched it to disability awareness and awareness of our LGBT community. But the numbers went up, so we were very happy to see that. And we ran two tracks at a time. We ran two books. We got fancy. It worked. So we had over 100 employees and 24 facilitators. 100% of our employees that participated in the book club said that it was applicable to their job and to their personal life. And 100% were either very satisfied or satisfied with the book club. And then there's affirmation from one of the employees that participated. And that picture represents so much diversity in so many ways. That brings joy to my heart that we have so many employees get together to have that courageous conversation about race and privilege. Some employees have told me that they've never talked about race in their life. They didn't grow up around diversity. They didn't really understand it, and that the book club has created knowledge that they didn't have in that space, and they've built friendships and relationships. So our book club groups are five to seven employees, and some of them do not want to be separated. They want to be in the same group every year, over and over again. So they've become friends internally and external from the campus. Really excited about our affinity groups, and if you guys notice, Dr. Namal is in most of these pictures. So I thank him for his support in this space, even as busy as he is. It means a lot. So our affinity groups, we have four, and I have the champions and the leaders. The champions are, most are, you know, pretty high level or on the cabinet. And what we want them to be able to do is, if there's a concern or a need within that group, we want their voices to be heard. So the champion is that dean or that manager that can bring it to leadership to say, "Hey, we have an issue or a concern or opportunity for improvement." And then the lead kind of plans things for the group and provides that day-to-day leadership. So they're off and running. They're doing things in the community already, and they're excited to have these groups. We also work with Dr. Mackey on professional development for our faculty. We did a survey to our faculty and said, "From a DEI perspective, what type of professional development do you need in the classroom?" Because we know we don't have the diversity in the classroom that represents our students. And our faculty, they don't always know how to support all of this diversity in the classroom. It's historically different from what we've ever seen before. You have five generations. You have an 18-year-old, you have a 60-year-old in the classroom. You have folks from the city, folks from rural areas. You have students internationally. It's a lot. So we surveyed them, and we took the top five things that they asked for, and we've completed training for two of them already. And next year, we'll complete, work with, collaborate with Dr. Mackey to do the other three. So the two we did was to provide resources for faculty. So we had 11 different areas of the campus on a panel that provides support for students. And they basically had a face and a name, and they told them, "This is where you can get scholarships. This is where you can get housing in the system if you notice someone is homeless. These are our community partners. Food insecurities, gift cars, gas cars, our food pantry." So the faculty then had a name and a face and a list that they could point to when they saw a student in need because they're our first line. They see way more than any of us do, so they need to be equipped with those resources. And then Ramadan was number two. Our faculty was like, "How do we support our students? Help us understand Ramadan. Help us understand what's going on so we can support our students." So we had two guest speakers come in from Maureen Valley that did an amazing job. We had over 60 faculty there, and they were engaged and asked a lot of questions. And then what's next? These aren't approved or funded yet, but these are some of the things that are on my mind, and we've chatted a little bit about it. In the community, we want to use JJC as a resource to help our small businesses as they develop. And as Minnie has said already, our demographics are changing. In 20 years, our Latinx and Hispanic population is expected to grow 158%. Currently, and these numbers are from the CED, minorities represent 48.7, let's just call it 49% of the population, but yet they own only 20% of the businesses in the Joliet area. You typically want your business ownership to match your demographics, and we're not there. If you look at non-white businesses, non-white population is 51%, but non-white, non-minority owns almost 80% of the businesses. So using JJC as a resource, how can we help our community partner diverse business grow and reap the benefit of some of these larger businesses? And we have the tools, we have the resources, and we have resources in the community that can help us. So that's one of the goals. And also, to just start showing up more like a Hispanic-serving institution. We do want our HSI designation, and that will come by default if we start looking more like a Hispanic-serving institution. And we know our demographics is changing, and we know that that is our primary customer, and that the growth will just continue in our Latinx community. So more wraparound services to support our students. Also, our Hispanic students retain very well. There's a small equity gap between the persistence of our Latinx students and our white students. Why not close that gap? Why not say that we have no equity gaps? And with institutional support and focus, I believe that we can close that gap. And then later on, the seal of excellence, yeah, and that's a goal of Dr. Namal's, and we're going to get there, but just baby steps in incorporating it in our institutional strategic plan. And then we're starting to see more immigrants and refugees support needed in the communities. We've gotten calls from Lockport and Lincolnway that they're seeing more and more students, and they're not sure how to matriculate them and graduate them and get them here. So we're going to have to educate ourselves more in that area. So when they come, when they land on our doorstep, we don't have to send them from office to office to office, but we'll have an advocate and someone to support them and walk them through the process. And this is my small but mighty department. We have Hector. Hector is from HR. He replaced Aaron. We have our wonderful, amazing student worker, Daisy, and Monique Claiborne, which most of you know. And on behalf of the DEI offices, we want to thank the Board of Trustees, Dr. Namal, and the Cabinet for your ongoing support in the DEI space. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we open the floor, I just want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Irvin for her leadership in this space. I've had many, many conversations, as Dr. Irvin reports directly to me, over the last 10 months. And I'm going to breach the confidence of some of our confidential conversations one-on-one and just offer publicly that it takes, you know, a real mix of courage and sophistication to move this work forward. She's produced an ambitious agenda. She's gone after it. Her office has held over 20 different events, I believe. Did I get that number wrong?
No.
Over the last year. And so as you walk these halls, you see artifacts of the DEI